I'm going to go ahead and call this Brooklyn City Council meeting to order. Mary Jo, will you please call the roll?
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Here.
Andy Selhards.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Epsom excused. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we're going to have an opening by Sue Grodick.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Words are not really adequate at this time, but I would like to say that our hearts go out to all Ukrainians, including our neighbors here in Brooklyn, Parma, and Northeast Ohio during this time of attack on the country of Ukraine. To all Ukrainians, we give you our sympathy, empathy, and now a moment of silence to show our support for you.
We have minutes to approve from the February 14th meetings. Anyone have comments or questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
To approve the minutes, Meg Ryan Chackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Due to scheduling conflicts, I was unable to attend the most recent open house and zoning meeting. I did, however, watch both, the zoning meeting and the last council meeting, and there are so many questions left unanswered regarding the potential rezoning of Manoa Avenue from residential to light industrial. The panel stated that there will be no immediate impact to the current residents, or at least no change for 20 to 30 years. We can't be that naive to think that there will be zero impact on residents having their property rezoned. So I will raise the question, how exactly does this impact the residents on Manoa and the other two areas slated for discussion? Two council people mentioned having an alternative option if and when a resident wishes to sell their home. It sounded like they were insinuating that rezoning opens up residence to two types of buyers. One willing to buy a house to live in on a street that is zoned for light industrial and all that comes with it, or another wanting to expand the current industrial area. What happens if we can't sell to either? What is the alternative then? Experts in the mortgage industry have mentioned buyers and/or current homeowners may have issues financing or refinancing the home through a residential lender if it is zoned commercial or industrial, making it a hard sell. Companies may not want to spend years waiting to buy up homes here and there until they get the whole street, making it a hard sell. On the other hand, what happens if a company comes in wanting to build and all the houses around me sell, but I hold out as it's my right? Will they just build around me? If we don't see change for 30 years, then what is the rush to rezon? Why not rezon in 30 years? Rushing this through, assuming there will be no impact in our lifetime, gives the impression that the panel doesn't care because it won't be their problem. Lastly, I wanted to say that I bought my house 12 years ago because it was on a quiet, dead-end street that barely anyone knew existed. I'm all for growth and making our city more appealing, but not at the expense of the residents. When I would stand in my backyard, there would be a line of trees separating the neighborhood from the AG Business Park. We have privacy. We couldn't see or hear anything. When the property owner remodeled for medical mutual, they bulldozed all the trees, and now I can see the entire building all lit up, the entire parking lot all lit up, and now Amazon. When I leave for work in the morning, I'm greeted by a giant concrete eyesore. When I come home at night, all I hear are dirt bikes riding around the parking lot. I did address the landscaping with the mayor previously, and I am hoping that the commercial property owner keeps their words to replace all that was there, restoring our privacy and seclusion. Otherwise, leaving things the way they are will make it a hard sell. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardo, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Excuse me. Regarding the health care, which has been going on since I was in high school, in the hospitals, big ones around here and pretty much everywhere else, at times over the years laying off mass amounts of people, and then all of a sudden they're crying, "We need nurses, we need nurses." Now the nurses are quitting evidently because I think they're overworked and not of not getting paid enough. And going back years and years, I think it was about 15, maybe 20 years ago, a friend of mine, wife, was in critical care, and again, understaffing, staffing to just the minimum, and she passed away. He tried a lawsuit, I think it went nowhere. I have several friends that are nurses, and talking with them, it's the same thing now. If one person shows up, does not show up, it's mild catastrophe, because all they're doing evidently is counting the beans. And the rest of it, as everybody knows with the health care, is a crapshoot. I have a friend that she's battling cancer right now on Medicare and the private, whatever insurance she has. And she's about 68, 69, was getting ready to retire. Then she found out she had cancer, went in total, total, oh, just directly, all the female organs were gone, the cancer had gone into her colon, partial colon. She now wears a colostomy bag for life and has tubes in her, I believe it's the kidneys that have to be changed on the average every three months or so. She had an infection. She was in the hospital. They got her well enough to go home, they sent her home with her own antibiotic bag to take care of, which she was able to do. So they saved the money, thousands of dollars a day of her being there, and they gave her a bill for roughly $800 a week for the antibiotics, which weren't covered because she was out of the hospital, which makes total sense, maybe in a crack addicts world. So after she got, she's well now, still battling things, she was on the phone with the payment people for the antibiotics. Well, you owe $800, you want to make arrangements? Well, yeah, but she goes, there's more than $800. And she said about $4, about $3,200 or better. Oh, no, no, you only owe $800. She goes, no, keeps arguing with the guy. She goes, please look it up. She goes, oh, we already turned you over to collections. She goes, I never got any notices or anything. And the girl goes, well, you want to set up a payment plan for this last $800? She goes, no, not really. You've already ruined my credit. I'd like to try to get this taken care of. And that's where it is right now, and, oh, excuse me. We asked started a help fund me account for, to help her out with her bills. Because like I said, I told her, my house is, thankfully, we're talking things, my house is paid for, I'm pretty lucky, thankfully. She goes, mine isn't, mine isn't, and it won't ever be. And about retiring, I asked her, she goes, I'm never retiring. It's like I told one investment counselor eons ago, and I was much younger, not an old guy now. She goes, what's your long-range plans? I go retire and die. He looks at me, I go, well, you see me go retire to Hawaii? Thank you.
We will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll start this evening with Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole met, as we always do, at 6:15 here at Council Chambers before the regularly scheduled council meeting. We discussed Resolution 2022-6, extending a moratorium that's been placed on small-box discount stores for a period of 180 days. Again, small-box discount stores is something we're reviewing as we rewrite our zoning codes. We're looking to extend this moratorium. There was discussion about extending it more than 180 days, but by recommendation of our law director, we, it looks like we'll be keeping it at that 180-day period. Ordinances 2022-2, 3, and 4 are to provide issuance of notes. Director Raguz and our municipal advisor, Mr. Stusinski, gave an update on these ordinances and their analysis about potentially converting them to bonds. Their recommendation is staying with the current note structure, but evaluating this annually at our first council meeting of the year. Ordinance 2022-2 is not to exceed $601,000 of notes, which covers the cost of the roof of the city's recreation center. Ordinance 2022-3 amount not to exceed $1.58 million of notes to cover the American Road project that was completed a couple of years ago. And ordinance 2022-4 not to exceed amount of $560,000 of notes from the Road Own Road and Road Own Alley project. And finally, we had 2000, ordinance 2022-5, a maximum principal amount of $1.1 million for the bond of the city's service garage roof. Finally, we had Director Raguz give an update of the January financial reports. These financial reports are, and the key takeaways, are available in the public section of the board docs, available for the public. The mayor gave an update on the building manager position, in which the job posting is closed and looking to start some interviews, and gave an update on the city center project and hopes to have Jason out at the next council meeting to give an update to council. Finally, the law director gave information on the city creating a moral claims commission. This discussion started after an incident that occurred with a recent accident involving a police vehicle responding to an emergency. We will now have the Public Safety and Environmental Committee, Ms. Grodick.
Thank you. Public Safety and Environmental Committee will hold a meeting on March 14th. It will be before our city council meeting at 5:30 in Chamber, in, yeah, Council Chambers. The purpose is to continue our discussion on utilities. That ends my report.
Thank you. Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The Brooklyn Recreation Center, Coach Pitch Baseball and Softball, 8 U, ages 68, registration begins March 1st through March 31st. Practices begin in May and games in June. Teams will travel to North Olmsted and Fairview. Park for games, residents $55, non-residents $65. 10 U, 12 U, 14 U baseball games, and 10 U, 12 U, and 15 U softball leagues, ages 8 through 15, will begin registration March 1st through March 31st. Practices begin in May and games begin in June. Teams will travel Strongsville, Brook Park, North Olmsted, Olmsted Falls, Middleburg, Fairview Park for the games. Residents $70, non-resident $80. Please visit www.brooklynrec.com for complete details. City of Brooklyn, 2022 Community Enrichment Camp is for Brooklyn residents and students ages 5 to 12. City of Brooklyn, St. Thomas More, and Brooklyn City Schools have partnered to offer a camp that will promote a full day of student enrichment, education, and healthy, active lifestyles. Summer camp will be held at the Brooklyn Recreation Center and St. Thomas More School. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. Before Care, 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 a.m., $5 daily fee. And After Care, 4:00 p.m. till 5:00 p.m., $5 daily fee. First portion of the day will be an education and enrichment session. Each camper will have this session to complete enrichment and educational activities assigned by camp directors and educators. These sessions will be held at St. Thomas More School and will be run by camp teachers and staff. Second portion of the day will include sports, gym games, crafts, nature walks, swimming, ice skating, and other activities planned by the camp staff. Field trips to be determined are included in the registration fee. Summer camp weekly sessions begin June 13th through August 12th. Camper fees, $120 weekly, $96 for second and third child. Brooklyn school students may be eligible for scholarships. Please contact Dr. Ted Calaris, Superintendent at Ted.Calaris@BCSHurricanes.org to apply. Campers must pack a non-perishable lunch and drink. Snack will be provided daily. Lunch assistance is available to those in need. Please let us know at registration if you need assistance. Swimming and skating lessons will be also available throughout the summer for registered camp participants. Information will be sent to parents regarding this, regarding the schedule. Registration may, March 1st through May 1st. Families register for all weeks needed by May 1st to reserve their spot. Register online, again, at www.brooklynrec.com. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on March 21st in the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Domestic Abuse Commission. February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Relationships exist on a spectrum from healthy to abusive, with unhealthy falling somewhere in the middle. It can be difficult, especially for teens and young adults, as they begin to date, to tell when a behavior goes from healthy to unhealthy or even abusive. Knowing the warning signs is important, such as checking your phone or social media accounts without your permission, isolating you from friends or family, and extreme jealousy. Knowing how and where to get help is equally important. LoveIsRespect.org is a great resource for information and has a 24/7 helpline for free confidential help. Teens, as well as their concerned loved ones, can text LOVEIS to 22522 or call 1-866-331-9474. Planning Commission, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. Planning Commission will meet on Wednesday, March 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. We have two items on our agenda. The first is a request for a sign package for Amazon at 10575 Memphis Avenue, and the second is a request for an illuminated cabinet sign for Universal Cabinets and Tile at 4324 Ridge Road. concludes my report.
Legislative Update, Councilman Barowski.
Thank you. The Ohio House of Representatives passed Senate Bill 181 this February 9th to protect the freedom of religious expression for athletes. The Senate Bill 181 is inspired by a Sylvania Northview athlete who was disqualified from a high school cross-country race because she wore a hijab during competition. According to the Ohio High School Athletic Association rules, participants were banned from wearing religious apparel unless the athlete had been granted special permission by the official prior to the event. The Senate Bill 181 prevents the OHSAA and other organizations from adopting rules that prohibit student athletes from wearing religious apparel while competing in sports. The bill received strong support, not only from Christians and Jewish, also Muslim communities. It now goes to the governor for consideration. That's my report.
School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. I attended the regular school board meeting, which was on Tuesday, February 15th, and I have a summary. There was an announcement that there was going to be a facilities meeting on February 23rd for information on resurfacing the track this summer, and they mentioned that they hope to be able to host track meets. They are soliciting for advertising for banners in the fieldhouse to raise additional funds. There will be guidelines on the types of advertisements that they can accept. Mr. Singer spoke about Ohio House Bill 529, which would require public and non-public schools to publish online their curriculum each July. If passed, it would also require public colleges to post their curriculum and also list all of their instructional materials that they will be using. They accepted a donation for $20,000 from the Athletic Boosters. This is to go towards the renovation of the concession stand, and this is in partnership with the schools district, the boosters, and Polaris, whose students will be providing the labor for this project. This is a win-win for our community. They recognize the students who achieved honor roll and merit roll for the second quarter. They adopted an agreement with Martin Public Seating for seating in the high school cafeteria in various classrooms. This is at a 54% discount, which saved $21,000, and the furniture is made in America. They adopted an agreement with the North Coast Shared Lot Services Alliance to increase the daily substitute rate to $125. They mentioned, like many other employers and other school systems, that they're having difficulty finding subs. They approved the supplemental coaching assignments for spring sports, and there is a detailed list of these available online. I would like to mention to the people who are doing this on a volunteer basis, they're not getting paid, and that is David Oldag, who's the volunteer varsity assistant baseball coach, and Bobby Henings, who's the volunteer assistant track coach. They accepted a couple of resignations and also passed a commendation thanking Mrs. Linda Etheridge for her years of service. They passed a commendation for Mrs. Debbie Tomusko for her service and contributions to the Brooklyn City Schools Hall of Fame Committee. And I wanted to mention, at the beginning of the meeting, there was a presentation of a program that the schools have this year. It's called Sit Means Sit Therapy Dog Initiative. And Mrs. Paula Jones had seen a therapy dog and decided to give it a try in the school system, and recognizing that COVID had such a deep impact on the social and emotional needs of both students and staff. So they had the dog there, and the dog who comes to our schools is Basha. Her owner is Angelica, who does this on a completely volunteer basis. Mrs. Julie McGary was there with two of her students, Tyler and Yasmin, who talked about how much the visits from Basha mean to them and the other students in their class, and what a bright spot it is in their week. Mrs. McGary also mentioned the positive difference that both Basha and Angelica have had with the students. The next meeting for the school board is Tuesday, March 1st, at 6:00 p.m. in the Treasurer's Office. This is a work session and is open to the public. And then the next regularly scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, March 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in room 173 at the high school. And that completes my report. Thank you.
The Board of Zoning met, zoning appeals, met on February 17th. There was a request from Kenny, Jenny Canderas, for five inches variance to the required minimum clearance between fences of 18 inches at 4116 Parkside Drive. While the resident behind objected, the motion passed unanimously. Additionally, there was a second project that required three separate variances to allow an additional oversized accessory structure, including the request from Bert Edwards for an 8% variance to the allowable area occupied by the sum total of all accessory structures of 60% of the rear yard at 10117 Biddle. The request for an additional accessory structure at the same address, and finally, for an additional 290 square feet to the allowable 144 square feet for that same accessory structure. No public objection was mentioned, and the motion to approve was also passed unanimously. We will now have reports of council. We will begin this evening with Councilman Selhards.
Thank you. In the next few months, Councilman Barowski and I will be contacting the residents to have a common backyard between Southwood and Kennedy. We've tried to have, a few years ago, we had two meetings with those residents. Only a few showed up. There is a common issue of some water retention when you have excessive rains. We're working with the law director, Mr. Butler, on this, to come up with a survey, try to get the residents' opinions. We'll actually probably try to have a meeting out within the neighborhood, since the two meetings here at City Council Chambers didn't, we had the same people show up, so it's not like we had a good participation rate. So we're going to try to give this one more shot and hopefully come to a resolution for those few neighbors in that area. Brooklyn Boosters Post Prom Committee had their night at the races this past Saturday. It was a great evening. There was roughly about 400 people, definitely enjoyable evening. And speaking of enjoyable evenings, the High School Musical Department will be performing Matilda coming up on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, March 10th, 11th, and 12th at 7:00 p.m. There will be also an afternoon performance at 2:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to make a brief announcement that the Legal Aid Society is resuming their in-person brief legal advice sessions, and the closest one to Brooklyn is March 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and it's at the Fulton Road Branch of Cleveland Public Library. And this is for civil legal issues, not criminal problems. Legal Aid does have a 24-hour hotline, and that number is 1-888-817-3777. And if you have a problem with a housing issue, they have a tenant info line, which Mrs. Crawl, just to address some of your concerns, I think it is really important to point out that the three areas shown are points for discussion, that absolutely nothing has been decided yet, and thank you for sharing your perspective as a resident of Manoa. I know we all appreciate that. The reason why the 30 years was mentioned was just as an example, the same exact situation happened with the residents on Tiedemann Road, right across from the Plain Dealer, that section of Tiedemann there. They also went from residential to light industrial, and I think the point that we were making is that the city never took any act, well, first of all, we can't take any action to force anybody to move, but never did anything to inhibit either if someone was selling their house or making improvements on their house. The city never took any action to impede that, and there are a few residents that are still in their same homes, and they were there originally when this change was made. And you raised some very good questions about if there would be implications on people getting mortgages. I don't know the answer to that, but certainly I think these are things that we all need to consider before a decision is made. So thank you for sharing your concerns tonight. And Mr. Ardo, I'm very sorry for your friend who is sick. When you're battling serious illness, the last thing you need is to be worrying about, you know, medical bills or the bureaucracy that unfortunately comes with them. Lastly, I would just like to ask everyone to please keep the people of Ukraine in mind and in your prayers, as Mrs. Grodick mentioned, for the moment of silence, that Northeast Ohio has a very large Ukrainian population, and so many people here have relatives and friends who are over there. I was mentioning to some of my colleagues right before the meeting started, my sister actually has an employee in the Ukraine, and she talks with her every day, and things are so much worse than we can even imagine. I hope that there's a quick end to this invasion and that the suffering of the Ukrainian people ends. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Councilman Barowski.
Thank you. My wife and I joined Andy and other residents this past Saturday night at the night, at the races, which was obviously a very good time. I appreciate all the donations, the volunteers, that put together a wonderful event for the school. And then, when it comes to the zoning, I absolutely agree with what Ms. Pucci said. She said it exactly the way I was thinking of it, so thank you. And then, second, for me, I'm actually good friends with Kevin Councilman. He's a Parma Councilman, and, you know, the last couple of days, they've had big events pertaining to the Ukraine situation, and I know that their city is looking to possibly do a resolution, a proclamation, so forth, denouncing Russia's unwarranted invasion. Just absolutely, we've seen the videos, we've seen the pictures coming out of the Ukraine. It's absolutely heartbreaking. I can't imagine all the little children, everybody, what they're dealing with. So if that's something that we could do as a city, possibly, I think that's something that warrants a good visits for consideration, and that's my report. That's my end.
Councilman Tansky.
Okay, I just have one thing, and I know council and the mayor have been talking, I know we didn't make a decision when we were going to do it with those extra 60 spaces for parking lot over, I believe was next to the city hall. Here's why I'm bringing it up. We had a rec meeting the other day, and not only did the rec members have played, use their time, I should say, trying to find places to park. Now, I've gone behind the rec center into the area where the construction is, trying to park. If I didn't catch the two cars that were behind me, they would have totally blocked me in, and who knows how long they would have been there all night. Not only would they block me in, but there was four more cars coming that would have jammed up those rec doors. That would impede an ambulance that they had to get through there, and also anybody has to come in and out of those rec doors for any kind of operation needs. Now, when I told them they couldn't park there because it was employees' parking, well, they had a Mrs. Chackey over there, area. well, they had a Mrs. Chackey over there area to park on side streets. Now, we're doing the same thing we do at Markwhort. And I've gotten a ton of calls through the summer on those driveways being blocked and how they're being parked. Now, we're going to start it over in the St. Thomasmore area. I believe, since these prices are going up for concrete and paving, I believe we need to look at extra parking. Again, we're being jammed up across the street again. It's loaded up again. Now, I know it's only once in a while we're going to see the hockey games, but it doesn't matter. If we can put in more spaces, so it can be used either for rec, it can be used for partying in parks if it gets over, it can be used for if we come back to home days, or whatever the events are, to have that additional parking and to pay for it while the concrete is cheaper, as Mr. Ronve and Kirk brought up many times, that things are going up. I believe, Councilman Mayor, we should be looking at paving those additional spaces so people have places to park instead of going to our side streets again. That pretty much concludes my report. I would like to get the mayor's thoughts on that parking over there. I know it's going to cost us more money. He's looking at me over there already. It's going to cost us more money. But do we pay it now, or do we pay it later? And I mean, it could, like I said, it could be used for anything when we have an overflow of cars. And that concludes my report.
Councilwoman Sue Groddick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Crawl, for coming and speaking today. I'm only one voice on the committee. I'm one vote here and one vote here at the ballot box. But I am very interested in hearing what the people on Manoa are thinking and what they would like to see. It's a, it was put up as something that we could talk about. And at the original meetings, Mr. Borowski was the only resident from Manoa there. So I would love to hear what you, what your neighbors, think about as we move forward with these discussions. Because right now, they are discussions. That's one of the things that the people who are running the zoning for us has said. Just because we move on with something else, anything can be pulled back off and reexamined at any time during this. So this is still on the table, being examined. But we definitely want to hear from the people from Manoa. So thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thanks. I just want to echo what Sue said as well, Kelly, that, you know, it is a discussion, and we are not anywhere near the end of this process with the zoning. Part of, you know, you had asked about why not in 30 years? A full zoning code rewrite isn't done all the, you know, every year. And it is a big task, and it's something that we are really just looking to, you know, completely rewrite the zoning code to make Brooklyn more attractive, to make it so that you don't have to have these... Even the Board of Zoning Appeals that I talked about today, you know, the variances for our small yards, and making sure that people have lots hoops to jump through to, whether it's building, or whether it's extending your property, the buildings on your property. And it's just something that we're looking at and looking, having talks about. So I would say, really, you know, I'm glad that you were able to watch the meetings, even though you weren't able to attend it. And I hope that you continue to, you know, speak up and talk with all of us on here and contribute when you, when you can. So thank you for that. We are going to move on to legislation. Oh, I'm so sorry. I got, I got lost on my sheet, the mayor's report, Mayor Gallagher.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chackey. First, I have a proclamation for Lieutenant James Mochan, who retired February 22nd last week. He was unable to attend tonight, but I still want to read this so everyone can understand and we can thank him for his contributions to the city. Lieutenant James Mochan began his career here as an emergency medical technician at City of Brooklyn on December 23rd, 1991. As I said, he retired on February 22nd. He was promoted to lieutenant on December 1st, 1997, and was assigned to the inspector bureau on a 40-hour basis for a brief time, and then became a junior lieutenant and worked his way up to a senior lieutenant and in charge of a shift. Lieutenant Mochan was a state-certified inspector and a fire instructor, and was highly proficient in all aspects of firefighting, especially pump operations. He was instrumental in putting together a crew of Brooklyn firefighters to assist in the recovery efforts on September 11th. Lieutenant Mochan comes from a family of firefighters. His father is retired from the City of Lynnhurst Fire Department, and his brother Michael was a lieutenant as well from here in Brooklyn Fire Department. We're proud to acknowledge his hard work and dedication here in the City of Brooklyn and in trusting the safety of our neighborhoods. He applied his knowledge, his training, and courage for the better of our community, and we thank him for his service on behalf of myself, city council, and our community. A couple of updates I have. We are sending out a resident survey. If you recall, we sent out a resident survey from ETC back in 2017. We've used this to guide a lot of our metrics. We're benchmarking services from fire safety to service garage to the rec center. We use this to outline our capital outlays of what's important to residents. So I encourage you to look at that survey. We also are going to use it to benchmark to see how far we've come from that original survey. So there were certain aspects that residents marked that essentially said that we need work on. One of that was update your city website. It was hard to navigate. More online, online paying. So we've worked towards those goals. We want to see what the current outcome is and what areas residents feel like we still need to focus on. One chunk that we did pull out of this resident survey, we kept a lot of park questions from the previous survey, but we pulled a lot of the recreational aspects out of this because currently, we've been working with GPD as well as WTI. We've had a meeting with city council to talk about what our next steps with the recreation center is. So as we meet with city council next, on some of those results, we're going to formulate a specific survey for a recreation center for residents to take. This will be a little bit more specific as far as digital pictures, money-wise, to attach what way we're going to go from here. There are a lot of different options, and one way is not the right way. So it's going to be, sort of navigate which particular items people find of value, where they rank on costs, and to what extent. So this will be a little bit more interactive, and that's why you won't see that chunk of it on there. So when we get through that next step with city council and we're ready to go out, that will be the next save, the next phase for our recreation center. I want to thank the Brooklyn Chamber of Converse. They hosted an event last week specifically for the businesses looking for workforce development. They invited myself and our economic development director, as well as Ohio Meets Jobs. Workforce is an issue. I've heard it a couple of times here tonight. It's all over the place. People are having a hard time finding employees from all sectors, whether it's manufacturing, commercial, or retail. So to try to assist our businesses as much as we can. And if you know of a business looking, please have them contact Jeremy. We have some information from the county, as well as from Ohio Meets Jobs and internally for that list. Mr. Tansky, to address your question, I want to maybe have somebody else recall my memory from the budget work session. But we did talk about this going through the budget work session as we picked and picked what aspects to move forward with. And maybe time you can recall, refresh my memory. We did talk about this in depth at the budget work session.
We did at the capital one, I believe, or maybe the other one, but we did.
So it's hard to...
What was the cost?
To the top of my head?
That I don't recall.
Let's get the figures down.
No, that I do not recall. I can gather those numbers.
But I promise you, the cost is what it was back, back in October. It's probably 20% more.
How do we revisit that? Because I'm going to tell you something. It's gotten... Here's where the problem is, and Meg can weigh in. That's her area. Yeah, these cars parked over, this isn't going to work because we're going to go into the same problem we had with Markwhort Park. They're overflowing in that area.
I mean, when the city hall's done, there'll be a section, two sections more available for parking. So that will help in that. You already highlighted the fact that you're talking about peak times with the hockey games. So if I look out my window during the middle of the day, we're lucky if we have 20 parking spots.
Well, it could be for any event. I wasn't just looking at that. If we had any.
No, I understand what you're, what you're saying.
Library? I mean, how many parks do you have for the library?
That's on the, that would be on this side of the street.
Sure.
So I understand your concern, and we could, we could revisit it. However, just so you know, we did talk about this in depth, and we did talk about the decision of the pros and cons of moving forward on that project. So, I mean, I could get you those numbers out. It will change, obviously, the outcome of our, our current costs. So I will send that out again. Did you have any other questions?
No, I was just bringing it up because of the issues that I see happening. I don't like to see stuff going on residential streets.
We did, so, and one, you bring up Markwhort Park. And speaking of the resident survey, we do have a specific question. In our master plan, there is a call from the County Planning Commission to have off-street parking at Markwhort Park. What I've seen previously in my time in city council, prior to mayor, there wasn't a lot of people in that area that were wanting off-street parking. But we did call it out in a resident survey. We can move forward with a small parking lot. It's been a recommendation for a long time by our service garage and by people like the County Planning Commission. We can explore that option. At the end of the day, those residents may come in a room and say, look, if we don't want this, we'd rather have street parking in that area. So it is one specific question. But I know, just as Ms. Crawl has an issue with this aspect, it's one of those things where we know we're going to have to have a discussion point. So we put it in the survey to discuss.
Well, the street parking isn't, I know they want street parking. Problem is, is when there's games, people try to get closest to their field. So when they try to get closest to their field, they now impede driveways because they don't want to park all the way back. So they're going to put half of their car in somebody's driveway just to get closer to that game. I see it. Watch what goes on all the time. Then I get the calls, or whoever else gets the calls in council. And I just, St. Thomasmore area, that's going to be, it's going to be the same thing. I mean, I don't, you know, whatever, whatever loads up over there, some of these people are going to park.
So we've tried to, we've tried to team up between recreation and police. Jack sends the schedule of all the games to the police department so they know, so they could do the rounds in that area, if one available, to check during the games, so they can tell people to move or ticket if they don't move. I mean, it's a pocket park. Until we have some kind of parking lot back there, it's going to continue happening, unfortunately. So, Ms. Crawl, thank you for coming. I appreciate your questions. Most of it has been answered. One, I wanted to specifically talk about the landscaping that was a promise by the developer, and that will be done when landscaping is put in. And I will ensure that... Two, one of your questions, and I like to be blunt. One of your questions was, you know, should it rezone? And should a developer or somebody go buy parcels up and say you're the last parcel left, and you decide not to sell? Are you going to be put in a position? It just depends what they're building and how badly they need a parcel. I know a story on Rockside Road, someone held out a long time, and their land was basically valueless by the time that it got to their parcel because they were able to build what they could. Same thing happened downtown when they built the casino. They built a parking garage, and there was a one person that was a holdout. So they built a parking garage completely around it. And when that guy wanted to go sell, he thought he was going to make a killing, and he didn't because at that point, it already built the structure. So it all depends, but typically, you're left kind of high and dry. I just want to put that out there because that's reality. That's obviously a scenario where it goes down those five steps. And then, your other question about a mortgage broker? I mean, that was something we could bring in and talk to, maybe somebody specifically to talk about the real estate implications. At the next meeting, if you did watch the last meeting, there was a call out to have specific letters to go out to residents in that area. Our next public meeting isn't going to be till April for the advisory and May or June for the public. And we could do a call out for residents during that meeting. But I think everyone highlighted it fairly by saying it's just a talking point at this time. We encourage you to, if you know of neighbors, or if Aaron knows of neighbors that want to come, bring them to the meeting. We want to hear this feedback. We try, but, you know, we have to get people to show up to the meetings. It might be easier in the summer to have meetings on-site. Sometimes we see we have a better turnout, like Andy's tagged them. Go to, go to people instead of having them come here. But it's too cold out to do that right now. But we could do that in the summertime. And that concludes my report.
Excuse me, can I say, to touch on Councilman Tansky's request. So I do have that information pulled up. So that was part of this discussion at the Capitol Budget Work Session in October of last year. The estimated cost at that time that we received was approximately $180,000 for the alternate for the back parking lot. I assume at this point, it's over $200,000 at this point, but just for your informational purposes.
Maybe, recognize, I just wanted to add something regarding the discussion of the parking. And that is that when you bring up Markwhort, I think most of us have gotten calls about that. And my perception is that it has definitely gotten better. And like you said, the police now have that schedule. But when there's games at Markwhort, like the soccer games, there is not enough area where we could ever have enough parking. So I don't think just having a parking lot there is going to be the, something that's going to, like, solve everybody's problems. Because that area just is not large enough to have a parking lot that big to accommodate all those cars. So you are going to have, still have the street parking. And, you know, like I said, my perception is that I do think it's much better than it was. And we also have some signs too down there about not blocking the drives. And we have ticketed people. And so I think we've sent the message out. And our discussion, basically, at that point, when we had to decide, we were like, okay, what are we prioritizing? Like, it's over budget, and what are we going to make the priority? And that's how we ended up not voting for those extra spots over by the rec center.
I think, Kathy, on the parking, on the Markwhort Park, I think we were, there were some talks of moving those games out there at one time.
There was if we had soccer fields, when we were in talks with the schools for a joint venture.
You good, Kathy?
I'm good.
I know. We're going to move on with legislation. Under Old Business, we have Resolution 2022-6, Extending a Moratorium imposed by Resolution 2021-25 on the Acceptance and Processing Granting of Applications for Zoning, Occupancy, and/or Building Permit Approvals for Small Box Discount Stores and Issuance of Such Approvals in the City of Brooklyn, Ohio for a Period of 180 Days and Declaring an Emergency. This is on second reading. Is anyone, council of comments, questions? Ordinance 2022-2 is also on second reading tonight, Providing the Issuance and Sale of Not to Exceed $601,000 of Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Bonds to Pay the Cost of Reconstructing, Renovating, Rehabilitating, and Otherwise Improving the Roof or Portions thereof of the City's Recreation Center as designated in the Plans Approved or to be Approved by Council and Declaring an Emergency. Ordinance 2022-3 is also on second reading, Providing the Issuance and Sale of Not to Exceed $1.58 Million of Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Bonds to Pay Cost of Extending American Road by Constructing, Grading, Draining, Paving, Constructing Curbs, Gutters, and Driveway Aprons, Installing Storm Sewers, and Making Other Improvements as Designated in the Plans Approved or to be Approved by Council and Declaring an Emergency. A second reading tonight also is Ordinance 2022-4, Providing the Issuance and Sale of Not to Exceed $560,000 of Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Bonds to Pay the Cost of Reconstructing Road on Road and Road on Alley and Declaring an Emergency. And also on second reading is Ordinance 2022-5, Providing the Issuance and Sale of Bonds
And also on second reading is ordinance 2022-5, Providing the Issuance and Sale of Bonds in the Maximum Principal Amount of $1.1 Million for the Purpose of Paying Cost of Reconstructing, Renovating, Rehabilitating, and Otherwise Improving the Roof or Portions Thereof of the City's Service Garage, Together with All Necessary Apparatuses There Too.
Does anyone recognize that?
Yes.
Are we going, when are we going to amend that to reflect the shorter time period?
So the shorter time period is in relation...
Oh, the rec.
Yes, number two. I confuse the two at times as well.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else on council, the mayor or directors, have anything else to add?
Just could Mr. Ragus give a finance report, just because we discussed that, and I think it's important that we share that with the public, the January financials?
Sure.
Thank you.
So just a brief overview of the January financial statements for the general fund. Overall revenues are 8% of the estimated amount, overall 28% less than prior year due to a decrease in the income tax revenue. This is resulting, resulted of a decrease in non-recurring revenue received in 2021 compared to 2022, so that's why income taxes are lower. Overall income taxes are 11% to budget, which is on par with the estimate. Overall, on the commitment side, overall commitments are 25% of the budget amount, mostly as a result of encumbrances. We encumber a large portion of our expenditures in January, so for instance, we encumber six or seven months of healthcare expenditures in January, utilities expenditures, and so forth. So that's our normal process, and the expenses will even out as we continue throughout the year. So that amount will trend to budget as we continue throughout the fiscal year. Overall, the financial, the general fund financials are decreased by $2.8 Million, so ending unencumbered balance of $13.5 Million. On the income tax revenues, so we received our distribution from Rita for February, a total distribution of $1.3 Million, $600,000 less than February of 2021, mainly as a result of non-recurring revenue that we received in 2021 of $382,000. So excluding the non-recurring revenue, so just comparing the reoccurring revenue for income taxes, overall, it was $218,000 less than our February 2021 distribution. Net profits were $165,000 less, and withholdings $53,000 less, or for 4%. So overall, income taxes are down a little bit, mainly as a result of non-recurring revenue that we received last year. So we'll continue to assess it, as we talked about late last year, as far as our major employers are concerned, and see where they're at as we get through the first quarter of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on council, the mayor or directors? Make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
To adjourn. Meg Ryan-Chackey?
Yes.
Andy Selhert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.